Good morning and welcome to the Medina County Board of Commissioners meeting. Please stand to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, move to approve the minutes of November 2nd.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes. And we will move into our commissioner commendations this morning. We have several very special guests with us. I'll tell you what, gentlemen, why don't you come up? Yes, and Dave, you want to come up as well?
I'm listening.
Okay. Behind the podium would be great. So we have, we have resolutions recognizing each of you for your service to Medina County veterans. And Dale, I'll start first with, with you. It has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Dale Wegant of Medina, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year for 2021 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. Dale is a retired Medina schoolteacher and non-veteran who has given extraordinary support for veterans during two years of the COVID pandemic. Dale has supported the American Legion Post 202 Annual Four Chaplain Service by filming the service and providing greater exposure to the community at large, which raised community attendance in three years from 56 to 186. Dale filmed and edited a virtual 2020 Memorial Day Parade, which was televised for the Medina community so they could have a Memorial Day celebration during COVID. And he spent several hundred hours filming segments and editing at no charge, and also developed a Christmas video for veterans at assisted living facilities in Medina, so that they could share with their fellow veterans who could not again visit because of COVID, assuring shut-ins that they were not forgotten during the holidays. Be resolved by the Board of Medina County Commissioners that we wish to recognize and honor Dale Wegant for his outstanding dedication to the well-being of veterans in the Medina community to instill the spirit of Americanism during the COVID pandemic. It is further resolved by the Board of Medina County Commissioners that he is commended for receiving recognition as the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year award. So, thank you, Dale. And we'll come up and present this certificate to you officially in just a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes. Okay, so our second, excuse me, commendation here is for Phil Grassa as Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran of the Year. So Phil, it's come to the attention of Medina County Commissioners that Phil Grassa, Medina, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran of the Year for 2021 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. Phil, as Board President of the Medina County Veterans Memorial, kept the hall solvent during the COVID by personally raising $8,000. Phil increased the property value of the Veterans Hall by converting a storage room into a conference room for families to video conference loved ones deployed overseas. And by engaging the Medina County Career Center, seeking grants, he saved the Veterans Hall $15,000 in expenses for the project. During his tenure as Veterans Hall President, he arranged four lunches for seniors from various assisted living facilities. Phil's service to Medina County veterans and the spirit of Americanism is unsurpassed, having led the effort to have an American flag in every classroom of every school in Medina City, serving a combined 24 years on the VFW and American Legion Honor Guards, and serving his second term as a Commissioner for the Medina County Veterans Commission. It is resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that we wish to recognize and honor Phil Grassa for his outstanding dedication and service to the veteran community of Medina County and State of Ohio with his efforts to serve the veterans community in many capacities, including his support for the Joint Veterans Coalition since its inception in 2013. It is further resolved by the Board of Commissioners that Phil Grassa is commended for receiving recognition as the 2021 Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran of the Year award.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve.
Second, we got a second, roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
You guys are up front.
Oh.
You're up front.
And you'll have an opportunity to have comments here in just a moment.
No, thank you.
So. Bill, that is yours. Dale, that is yours. Hold yours up, Dale. There you go. Don't yell more than one. Great, you're good. All right. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, talking. We very much appreciate it. And if either of you would like to make a few comments, you're welcome to. The microphone is yours.
I do enough speeches at the meetings at that time. Give everybody a break, then I'm going to shut up.
Well, again, congratulations to, to both of you. And thanks, Ed and Dave, for all that you guys do. You're, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. If you have other things to do, we completely understand. That's an order, right? Thanks, Dave.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we will move on into our resolutions for the morning. So first up, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and standing in is Dan Becker.
Morning, that was nice. Neat.
Good morning, Ed.
Two resolutions for your consideration today. The first is approving the final plat for the Valley State subdivision. And the second is approving the annual assessments and improvements for the same Valley State subdivision.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes. Permits are in there.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was.
That's all right. We got it. Thanks, Dan. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
I have eight resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is revenue adjustments for various funds. The fourth resolution is a cash transfer for a fund. Fifth resolution is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Print Shop Revenue Line item. This is for the month of October. Sixth resolution is allowing expenses of the county engineer. Seventh resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the final resolution for today is approving claims for the week in the amount of $1,291,188.87.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have a new hire in sanitary, two rate increases, one in transit and one in sanitary, a date correction in finance, and two resignations, one in maintenance and one at job and family services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Next up is Scott Miller, our County Administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I have two resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing a master agreement for the provision of computer network support services. This is with Thomas Tech. And this is for support of the backbone equipment. And the second resolution is authorizing an agreement with Balloon Media LLC. This is for the provision of developing a request for proposal related telephone services from Medina County offices. As I think I've spoken with each of you, where we are looking to move to a new phone system, cloud-based system. Our current system will be unsupported in several years. We will not be unable to upload updates. And I found out last week that we have no longer have onsite support. So we would like to move forward. In talking to several companies, it's a very complex project. So I checked with some other counties and they've used Balloon. They've come highly recommended. So I'd like to go ahead and contract with them to prepare the RFP and then also assist in assessing the proposals that are received.
Scott, how old is our current phone system?
It was installed in 2013.
So it's eight years old now. Okay.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Hey, how you doing? Morning.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number one for the North Pump Station renovation project with Workman Industrial Services. This is for a generator installation and the new perimeter fence. The second is authorizing change order number two for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project 2020. And this is just to adjust the final quantities and close out the project.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, discussion? Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning. I just have one resolution for your consideration. As we install our technology in our onboard vehicles upgrades, in agreement with Trips Bar Technologies, our current vendor, to purchase cloud-based application hosting, this is what we found to be a more cost-effective way than a physical server. So we're looking for approval to do that at a cost of $1,600 setup and $6,929.55 annually. This will allow us to support integration with our current systems and onboard technology for more efficiency.
Now, move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? So Shannon, how does this integrate with your Easy Fair system? Is this part of that?
It is actually separate, but it's, we're utilizing the onboard modems to plug in the, both the Easy Fair validator and the tablet. So we're double using that. We had cost benefit from grants to put in the on, the modems. So we found a way to plug in with our current systems and get a much faster response. It's very quick. We found it to be the most efficient way to do it. Even in the building, we found some good signal from the current systems we have. So they're going to work together with that onboard modem and everything will be integrated. But the integration back to our current systems will be more, better reporting, better communications with our dispatch, bring us into the latest technology when it comes to the, the FTA and the ADA and all the reporting we have to do. It's really going to help us.
So each of these modems is actually on the bus?
That's correct, yes. It's mounted in the bus.
So it's good to have a modem on the bus.
Yeah, and we found a, we found a way to work with AT&amp;T and FirstNet through the county to get a pretty good cost of it. It's not as high as the market value. So we did very well in being the most efficient and the best cost-effective way with, with what we want to do.
Excellent.
Okay, very good.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
I just have one of the, I didn't mention, as we look ahead to the Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday, we know the observed holiday for us is the 24th of December, and then it would be the 31st, the Saturday of the next physical day. We would not be running on those Saturdays. We're going to be communicating out to the public. They can make plans. It's a Saturday minimal service, but we just found that we want to start sooner than later, communicating that to our public.
Right. And you'll have that on the website?
Website, onboard the vehicles, and our Facebook site as well, which we found most people look that to there on what we're going to do. So both ways, all three ways.
Excellent, very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our department updates. First, we have Greg Brown from the county home. Good morning, Greg, and congratulations on the levy.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. So that was my, that's my lead-in.
How'd I guess that?
Yes. Thank you so much to the Medina County residents for placing their confidence in Medina County Home for another five years. I'm relieved to have my first levy behind me. It was an eye-opening experience for me to witness firsthand the continued commitment of the Medina County residents to support their county home. Although I wasn't surprised because Medina County has always shown strong support for the home since 2002 at the first election when it passed by 64%. So, and it was also awesome, it being my first one, to go to all the cities, villages, and townships to see how those meetings are run as opposed to this one and the similarities, and also to get a better understanding of the communities that the home serves. I also wanted to thank my advisory council, friends of Medina County Home, and the Commissioners for your support. Going into census, we're currently at 39 with one pending for this month. We still have two ADC participants. Special thank you, the boiler is up and running.
Just in time.
Just in time, that's correct. Also, just as a note, my licensed social worker, Amy Perrine, my charge nurse, Diana Kerrigan, and myself, we attended the Ohio County Home Association Conference yesterday. And of course, the common theme throughout, both certified and non-certified, was staffing issues. Not surprising. Get the round table there and kind of come up with some ideas to see what other, other places have done. It was very good. My, my staff really deserves a lot of praise for the long hours and dedication that they're giving to make sure that our residents are taken care of.
Greg, how many members are there of that association? Because there's only 10 or 12 county homes in Ohio?
Right, I was going to say, I don't want to misquote. I know that there's eight non-certified that, that come to us. And then even there yesterday, because it's down at Salt Fork, not all of the farther north and, and east ones were able to, to attend that. So, yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that. Next time I come through, I'll give a, a statement of exactly current.
I, I know or believe that it is a declining number as time goes on.
I was just told at this one that last year Mercer County closed theirs. So there's one more, one more not, not going. And then to listen also to the way that the certified ones are running. And it was, it was just very interesting to see the similarities and differences that, that we both share. So it was, it was great. Some of the events from last month, the Clutters came in and did a Halloween party. Access the Arts came in and did a party for the residents. Also, we've been, started to receive our, our holiday donations that have been coming in the mail. People coming in to drop off. This month, we'll of course have very fresh turkeys for Thanksgiving because they, we had several donated through the, the auction at the Medina County Fair. Very much appreciated. I also had Medina Presbyterian Church donate money for clothing for the residents. Very much an outpouring as well. And another great thing that happened, also very interesting, it's flying still now at the, at the home. It's, is the, the flag that was donated by Representative Sharon Ray. That was a, that was a neat experience. Other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Greg, do the residents have any particular need over the holiday for things that could be donated? Is there anything that the community should be aware of that if they have an inclination to, to donate, they could?
There's always a need for transit passes. That's, that's that. Other than that, I mean, we do have, there'll be agencies. In fact, the Park District, again this year, is taking on Secret Santa for the, for the residents. They did it, I think this is their third or fourth year doing it. It's phenomenal there. But transit passes, you know, that, that's a huge one because, especially for the ones that, that don't have any income, that's, that's, that's huge.
Mr. Ryan, do you have any transit passes available? So, so how would one go about buying a transit pass and making a donation?
There's a couple things we could do to help. Monthly passes, city passes to certain areas. Also, adults who are not working every day about, just to see your apartment to make sure they have any days for your social service.
Absolutely.
There's some other things we can do. We'll be in contact.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. And again, congratulations on, on the levy. Next up, we have Laura Toth from the Office for Older Adults. There she is. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. Piggyback on what Greg said, we do have several county home residents that are over the age of 60, so receiving transit subsidies for the trips that they might require for doctors or various shopping essential things like that. So I think we're all working together, which is really nice. Good morning. I want to start today by discussing our volunteer shopping program. This is a program that was developed during COVID where volunteers in the community were matched with seniors who needed shopping assistance. And the volunteers could take lists and go to any Bueller's in the county to purchase those items for seniors and then have them delivered. So it was a wildly popular program, and we have assisted over 300 seniors, partnering them with the community members. This program continues to be popular with seniors, but many of our volunteers have the added responsibilities of work and family commitments that they didn't have, you know, during COVID when we first started this. So I wanted to put a shout out while we're here to anyone who might be interested, any Medina County community member, to help seniors in, in their own neighborhoods or vicinities to shop. So interested people can contact the office. But seniors, the referrals keep coming in, and now there's a little bit of a wait list because we have not as many volunteers. So we're recruiting, and you'll see things on Facebook, and probably I'll hit Brian up to get something in the, in the newsletter about that. We now have a new kitchen supervisor in place, which is really exciting. That was a very long 60 days. But we're happy that that position is filled. That was a very long 60 days, but we're happy that that position is filled. And we're on schedule to again start regular Friday meals that are prepared by our kitchen after the first of the year. We have special meals, I mean, throughout the holidays. And we're hosting a free volunteer, or I'm sorry, veterans recognition tomorrow with veterans pinning, presentation of colors by the Marine Corps League, and patriotic entertainment by Leo's Jolly Jammer. So that's a free lunch. Additionally, we will have our Thanksgiving feast on Friday, November 19th, a turkey dinner with all the fixins and entertainment by a duo called The Escape, a couple of women that are very entertaining. And that meal is $5, so seniors can register by calling our office. I wanted to have, I have some meal numbers. The first page shows 2021 meals by month. So we have home-delivered meals, and then we have congregate meals. And you can see if you look at the trend in home-delivered meals, our number of home-delivered meal clients from kind of the height of that pandemic has has decreased in July when we started back with our regular restrictions on home-delivered meals. You can see we went from 235 home-delivered meal clients down to 186. And I thought that trend would continue to go down, but you can see in September, we're in the 180s as well. And October, which isn't here yet, we're still in the 180s. So that number of 180 is pretty consistent. And we're delivering between 3,500 and 3,900 meals per month, which puts us on schedule for over 52,000 meals delivered this year. And the second page is the breakdown. That's kind of a group number. The second page is a breakdown by totals of each township or municipality in the county. So if you look at the middle column, which is home-delivered meals, you can see there's a pretty even dispersment. We're trying to to hit everyone in the county, and I'm pretty pleased with the way with the way that looks. The first column is number of subsidized transit trips. That number is down, and it also continues to be Medina City is by far the most consumer where the most consumers live that utilize transit subsidies. And I realize that Medina City, obviously a big municipality, but even compared to Brunswick or Wildsworth, Medina City is just a really big user of transit. So what message are they getting, the seniors in Medina City, that other seniors are not getting? That is kind of the pickle, kind of what I'm trying to figure out. So just an observation and kind of where we're thinking of where we can get the word out about more transit, especially if you look in Lodi to date through September, there were 34 subsidized trips. That number to me should be in the hundreds. So you know, what's not being communicated is kind of an ongoing battle to figure that out and get the word out to people. Interesting. We have signed up again to participate in the Subaru Share the Love program. This will be our third year in a row. This involves several outreach activities in the community to our seniors and to the public. We look forward to earning credit for the worthwhile program. Last year, the last two years, it brought about $1,800 into the agency, which is there's no earmarks that we can use it for whatever we want to, which is really nice. And our new media and activity supervisor is in charge of that this year, and she wants to go for kind of two credits, which would, if we get approved, put us about 3,600. That would be really fantastic. So we do have a new activities and media supervisor, and since she's been here, which is August, we've had a steady climb in social media posts. We've gained Facebook followers, but more importantly, our reach, which is the number of times people are seeing thing seeing things in July was about 1,100, and in October was over 3,000. So our reach is really growing, which is exciting for us because more people are learning about us. And finally, I just wrote this because I made a note of what you asked, Greg. We are taking names, if you know any seniors in need for a senior giving tree, they can again contact our office, 723-9514, and we can make sure that if there's a senior in the community that needs a gift or needs to know people are out there thinking of them, we will fulfill that need.
Do you already have a tree up that started?
Actually, we have a couple of trees in the community, and they take our names.
So you need like a name and address for?
Yep, a name, address, and any any gift ideas that somebody may have.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful holiday.
You too. Next up, we have Phil Titterington, our Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Director.
What's that? The day is flying.
Yeah, well.
Thank you.
Next marks will be right on time.
I don't have. I see her. All right, good morning, and thank you for allowing me to provide updates on behalf of the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board, which is often referred to as ADAM Board. So today, I just want to highlight some of the programs, services, supports that, you know, focus on mental health, crisis supports, and the recovery supports. Those are primarily where levy dollars are best utilized. So with the mental health and crisis supports, you know, we continue to see a high need for these services. It does not decrease, and we're starting to see, you know, as we go forward, we'll see what the COVID impact has longstanding. So so in the first quarter, so this report will be the first quarter of fiscal year '22, July through September, the agencies in the ADAM Board's continuum of care, which includes satellites in Lodi, in Wildsworth, and a big in-home presence in Brunswick, they had the following number of individuals that were active in services. So Ohio Guidestone had 832 clients active, and 47% were adults, 53% are youth. Alternative Paths had 4,571 clients active in services during that quarter, 92% adults, 8% youth. Catholic Charities had 100 clients who are active in those services, 86 are adults, and 14% are youth. Now, like Catholic Charities, we don't necessarily see all of the clients. Basically, the clients that we see are those that we pay for or have some type of payment. So really, what this equals in the public system, 5,503 total clients being served through that quarter, 86% adults, 15% youth. So as you can see, our agencies are working hard in the public system. People are using it, and they're providing those services as well. Human Services Levy was critical, and it still is very critical. It has allowed the ADAM Board to fill gaps not covered by any other funding sources. Crisis is a big one like that. In the first quarter, through one of the things that we fund through the levy is the 24/7 Crisis and Behavioral Health Line, and that's operated by Alternative Paths. So in that quarter, 756 calls or engagements through that line. Of those, 48 individuals verbalized suicidal thoughts, suicidal thoughts, 27, there were 27 active rescues, whereas either somebody from the crisis went out there, or they contacted law enforcement, got officials to stop and to help that individual. 42 referrals were made from law enforcement through their crisis intervention program. So through all the Medina County law enforcement, ADAM Board helps fund a crisis intervention training, which they send officers through, and I believe, don't quote me, but, quote me, I'm in a public meeting, about 420-some law enforcement officers have gone through that program since inception. Every year, they usually have a a class of 30 to 40 law enforcement. So it's really helpful. And that allows and teaches law enforcement those skills when they go out to an active scene, when they're dealing with somebody who's in a mental psychotic state, so they can handle it appropriately, and give them the skills and the tools. Approximately 428 youth during this quarter were diagnosed with serious emotional disturbance, and they're concurrently receiving services. So those are the high end. Approximately 1,500 adults and 240 youth were receiving psychiatric services. We have 44, the ADAM Board has 44 supportive housing units, and it's no secret that those are full, and we can always use more. With ADAM Board funding, a loss team was created and implemented in this last quarter, more specifically July 19th. And this is a team of trained clinicians that go out in response to a death by suicide. So they're there to support the family and or guardians, and they're not there to provide them clinical and counseling, but to give them the support that they need to reduce the stigma, to help them identify what resources there, and maybe follow up with them as well. So it's a great program. Unfortunately, we've had to use it four times since in that quarter. So moving on to real quickly about recovery supports. So levy funding has been critical and very important in helping the ADAM Board build up recovery supports throughout the county. For example, there's a Hope Recovery Community. It operates out of a home on Highland Drive purchased by the ADAM Board. We're happy to announce that we're in the process of expanding perhaps that building. What they found is, is and kind of what we predicted, is is they provide such a good outreach, such support, that more and more people are coming to it. And that particular house, while when we built it, you know, we built it so that it would at least provide an area for a lot of individuals to come through, plus there's offices, there's a bigger need. So we're working with the city. We received, we're applying for a capital grant, and the ADAM Board is really supportive of expanding that by maybe another 1,800 square feet for a big room. So look forward to that and see how that goes. There are 16 certified peer recovery supporters between Ohio Guidestone and Hope Recovery Community. Those are individuals with lived experience who get certified through the state on how to interact and work with others that are going through a recovery plan, looking, you know, towards, or sometimes they, you know, they're in that really early stage. So that's pretty critical, and and it's very important, and it and it works. You know, it's people who can work with another who have that experience and speak the language, so to speak, right? 10 peer supporters under Ohio Guidestone are serving 125 clients or individuals. There's a partnership now with Alternative Paths through the Crisis and Behavioral Health Line and Hope Recovery Community, so that there is a peer supporter on call 24/7. So when those crisis calls come in, and there's that need, there's that linkage, and that really helps out as well. So we've seen very positive in that. But of course, you know, thinking about costs, you have somebody 24/7, right, on call. So once again, it's that levy funding that was critical. So they've teamed up with Medina County Job and Family Services to provide peer support for their Ohio Rise program. So there are nine families that are involved in that, and what that peer supporter does is that helps that parent who's struggling through their recovery and getting all the supports and the treatment that they need so that they can be reunited with their child. Those are pretty high-end cases there as well. During the first quarter of fiscal year '22, Hope Recovery Community linked 87 individuals to a detox or residential treatment or even recovery housing. So that's critical. We've used them as as kind of our gatekeeper. So when it, you know, as you can imagine, when an individual is linked into that type of service, if they don't have insurance that covers it, which most insurances don't, that is something that the ADAM Board does pick up. So once again, levy funding is critical, and it's helped, and it's reached out to those. And by connecting into the Hope Recovery Community, individuals who go to detox, residential recovery housing, they have that network. So we can keep them in the county and provide them with the resources and navigate throughout the whole system. So it's really a critical, it's a neat piece to see how it's unraveling. And it's really unique to Medina County. I mean, there's a couple out there, but I don't think to this extent. We're almost on the home front here. So there were 98 individuals receiving medication-assisted treatment through Ohio Guidestones. They have an open access clinic. Somebody who's in crisis or somebody who needs medication-assisted treatment, they can walk in during their hours, and they can connect it. Alternative Paths also has MAT services as well. So and through levy funds, we're able to help out with recovery housing. So during this last quarter, we've provided, the ADAM Board provided financial support to Kathy's House, which is a certified recovery house. And after much contemplation, Kathy's House is converting to an all-male facility. So the way it works right now is Kathy's House has 11 men, seven women beds. They're a level two. I won't get too complicated in the weeds, but what we're seeing is now the ADAM Board opened up a Discovery Recovery House over on Northland Drive. So we own that building. Ohio Guidestone operates it, manages it in support, and Hope Recovery Community helps out. It's a level three, so that's more of the intensive need for for women. It's a 12-bed. Right now, we have 11 with a waiting list, a small waiting list, and we leave one bed open because of COVID. They've already seen the case, and this way they can quarantine in in one. Over the last year, the number of women who are meeting level-two criteria really has declined, to the extent that if there were seven beds, they're filling one, two, and maybe three sometimes. So they don't have the need for that level, and they have a waiting list of men up to 16 at all times. I mean, so so the men, there's a greater need, so they're going to convert over, and they'll serve. Now, the safety plan for any woman, women who might need some recovery house, they go to the Discovery Recovery House when there's openings for from the ADAM Boards, or they've connected to surrounding counties who have facilities that can help women of that need. And then over the next year or two, the ADAM Board's priority is, is we're looking at recovery housing throughout the whole county. What does that look like? Are there a level one? Now, level one is is more of what we're seeing is, is you go into a higher level need, and you meet that program, maybe you're in there for nine to 12 months, and then you're going to transition it. Either you are now ready to go independent, or you still need that added support of a house. So it's more of a level one, so it's kind of peer run. You come in, and there's some oversight. Over the last quarter, ADAM Board helped Kathy's House, they purchased another house in Medina, turned it into a level one. It can serve up to six males, so they do have that transition piece going right now. Right now, they have four in there. So they're just, and we'll look and see if that's necessary then for women moving forward. So that collaboration's continuing. So the final topic is, and I'll just hit it, it's the common theme that really what we're hearing throughout, whether it's in the social services or the businesses, is workforce. So we continue to struggle with workforce in the behavioral health field. We, as an ADAM Board, are really working very closely with our agencies to identify recruitment, retainment, and other types of of strategies. We're also looking at strategies that will encourage individuals, younger individuals, even getting into the field. So we're even seeing that individuals are even entering it. So we're working very there, very well with and on some types of strategies there. So in closing, you know, because of the Health and Human Services Levy, we're able to go above and beyond what we're mandated to do, as well as, you know, some of the supports. And most important thing is, is we can make it local. You know, when you get state funding, federal funding, you know, you got to hit their priorities first. Levies allow us to really look inside our county to identify what's there. So I do appreciate the time that you've given so that we can provide, you know, provide an update to the ADAM Board or for the ADAM Board. If there's any questions, I'll take them now, or you know where to find me.
Phil, I've heard a lot about mental health as it relates to COVID and some of the stressors of the isolation that the community has gone through. Have you seen an increase in mental health issues that are attributable to COVID?
I think that you can attribute to COVID because of the isolation piece. So when you talk about mental health, you talk about sometimes depression, you talk about isolation, social. So even in a in a school setting, I think it's clear that we've seen numbers of youth who are in need of some type of mental health. I mean, they they're working at home. And even just thinking of of a, just real quickly here, of a ninth grader perhaps transitioning into high school. And it's a pretty big transition, I think we would all agree. And you lose a year because you have to be at home, right, for COVID. So you're isolated. Now, all of a sudden, you get thrown back in. And now you're in a new setting where you didn't have that transition time. And so you're treated differently, because then maybe the 10th graders go through that integration program. Now you're an 11th grader. So just in of that, we're starting to see more. Now, what we've countered with is, is a lot of the schools have mental health programming. So we've been able to help support, like there's a Hope Squad, there's a mental health first aid to identify prevention, individuals who are looking at or exhibiting some mental health, suicidal life, and then you intervene, and you go from there. And then overall, I mean, we can go down the line with, yes, we are seeing youth, adults, and even seniors because of, I mean, some still with work, and they and even seniors because of, I mean, some still with work and they still have struggles and just the fear of getting COVID, right? I mean, that's a new thing that's out there, so.
So have the number of deaths related to suicide and overdose gone up? I mean, could you have year-to-date figures? You mentioned just in the last quarter, there were four suicides.
Well, yes, there were four suicides through the loss. What I would do is I get that information. The problem with with me is is there's many different sources, right? So generally, what I would do is I would converse with the Health Department. They have better data. And then we can get that data and we can look at where the deaths are in terms of the suicides versus the maybe the overdoses as well. But on that note, with the overdose, so through the county, and you have all signed off on it, there is an overdose. Look at that, I'm up here and now it's like stage fright, I just forgot. Review board. So we do have a fatality review board that we're a part of, but there's also now an overdose review board that's several stakeholders that are involved in that we look at overdose deaths. We analyze some of those to see if they could be prevented, what was missed, and those kind of things. So my point to that is, is they kind of keep that data. So we can, I can reach out and.
Thank you. Sure. Any other questions?
Okay.
Very good. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. We appreciate the update. We will move into public comment. Do we have anybody out there that wants to address the board? Seeing none. Steve, we need to go into executive session.
Yeah, following our discussion, like we'll go into executive session to consider the appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
Roll call.
Hamley.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Discussion session. Scott, do you have anything for discussion? Jer. Okay. Craig, Shannon, Phil, anybody, anybody? Steve?
Yeah, I was going to bring up Denise is prepared and we're going to be getting that out. A little description of our First Centerville Fifty-two, the Wind and Solar Electric Generation Siding Authority. As you know, that we have the ability to create exclusionary zones. The proposal at this point is to make all the township areas exclusionary. There's a process of not only having two public hearings, but also a map that has to be displayed at the at the libraries and all that process. So we'll be getting the documents to you here shortly. I think I will be starting the public hearings. I know that Rhonda's already conferred with you to make sure you're you're fine with the hearing days. The hearings are not actually required by by law, but then we're adding them to make sure that the public is well informed. Notification is being sent to all the local jurisdictions, affected jurisdictions, which include not only townships, but also municipalities, as well as the school boards, because they wouldn't be affected by these basically utility scale projects. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and that'll be, I think, issuing here within the next day or two, the announcements.
So has there been any communication with the Township Association?
No, I've talked to an occasional trustee about it and as we've gone up, talked about L M R E and and fiber. And generally, they're supportive of of doing that. I think they're all going to wait and see what the what the general public feels about it. We've had conversations with the with the State Chamber of Commerce as well, as well as representatives for some of the power generator developers, and they're concerned with our approach, as you might imagine. But likewise, it provided, there's a provision in here, obviously, that once this is adopted, there'll be provisions for that if anyone wants to do a project, they would go through our county planning department. We can set up those criteria. So I think as we grapple with that authority, I know I've talked to commissioners elsewhere that already have projects well in the pipeline, and so they're not affected by this law. They wish they would have had this authority to be able to do it upfront, to be able to set the condition before an application has really started at the state level. What it comes down to is counties have the authority to say yes or no at various levels. This is one where we're setting it very clearly that we're going to say no, but if you want to come forward, we can obviously, I guess, leverage what the conditions need to be based upon public input and not only public, from the general public, but also the obviously the township trustees, I think, and property owners. You have some large-scale property owners. We've got sections that are not going to be likely to have utility scale, wind or solar, but we have other areas, basically flat, a lot of farmland, that'll be prime areas for that. And I did talk to one, also a developer, housing developer, and they're just glad that we're doing this because they've got future plans for some of these township areas. They prefer housing, rather opposed to, you know, two, three thousand acres of solar fields, not something that they're really interested in seeing because it kind of cuts into their ability to sell their product. It's not very marketable for for those purposes. So they're glad that we're approaching it from that perspective. This is open for discussion, obviously, with the general public.
Right. The only two, what I would think of as large-scale projects, solar projects that I'm aware of, is the City of Wadsworth.
And that's not a large scale.
I've not seen, well, by definition, I mean, I'd be, but it's, just to look at it, it's fairly large.
Yeah, theirs, I think, is twenty or twenty-five megawatts and these go fifty megawatts and above. So but yeah, we're really talking about huge, that change the character of a whole community.
I just want to say, we went Friday to see Wadsworth receive the Ohio Magazine's Best Hometown Award, and I just wanted to congratulate the city very impressive.
Oh, yes, they did a very nice job on it, so. Nothing else? We are going to go into executive session. We will come back on the record in return. Thank you.